Okay, this work session has been ready to cancel. We'll come to order. You stand and join me for a moment, please. Okay, will you join me if I can leave?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Danielle, we call it all, please.
Mr. Mayor O'Farrell?
Here.
Ms. Mariker?
Here.
Ms. Lower?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Towne?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Hey, Mr. Burke, I believe you have everything, don't you?
I hope so, sir. First item for council's discussion tonight is the two draft designs of the town logo that have been developed by Standout Arts. Staff would hope that council could provide direction as to either one, or if there's changes that you would like to see, we can reach out to Shannon and see if there's other things that she can incorporate into them.
Why don't we start to push it off over here? Ron?
Uh, one on the right.
Will you come back in?
Yeah.
Alex?
I like the one on the right. Problem between the two, I was looking at these the other day. I'm really fine with either one. I like the cabin type zero underneath the one on the left, but I like the top portion of the one on the right. It has trees and everyone's about the same town, but I say I'm fine with either one to take the tree.
All right. Joe, I'll go ahead and move your stuff, sorry.
I said maybe the one on the left a little better than the right.
I like the right better. I mean, it needs some work. There's a few little pieces here and there. Like, it's too tall. It was kind of stretched out. Colors are, they're too, yeah. It's these people, but I like that one.
Okay?
I sort of like the one on the left just because it's a little bit cavernous and the mountains, so that's fine.
Yeah, hey, do you have a chance?
Yeah, no, I'm definitely torn between the two. I think the reason why I leave the little ones is because I do like the fact that it includes the caverns and the composes, you know, our assets, but now, okay. I'm like Joey though, do believe that it needs more work. I'm not sure, I think the Lorraine could be swashed a bit, not so large. That would help the height of the logo generally speaking. But I asked you about this as well. I know that Jackie is doing a rebranding. I hesitate to say it would make a decision now only because I think it would be important to recognize what Main Street's doing with their branding and color and the feel and be mindful of that when we, you know, make a decision today, if we make a decision, Paul and we'll order letterhead, do all the things, and they, you know, will figure expenses only to them in four months have something that's, you know, they were against what LBI might be helping to use it when the rack bars and events and so, you know, what it's worth, you know, I had to, I would probably go with the right today, but I wouldn't necessarily be.
Well, that's a good point. If you want to just table us and talk with Jackie, see how far along they are with their logo.
It's not, how about we say what kind of choice would I like, just that it's out there. I like one on the right, but I'm not so sure. I think, I like the colors look fine, they flow, they get movement to it. But if you call, the two colors, I don't know if they go together or not, the darker greenish and then the green-green. I do like brown and, oh, brown's good.
The only thing I'm thinking of, Ron, when I look at that flow with us here, I mean, when we look at that, I mean, we know we're looking for the word Lorraine.
Right.
I'm just wondering if this is somewhere else and someone just catches a glimpse of this.
It would.
You could lose that L, I think, and you could even lose the Y. At first glance, if you were not already, if you didn't already have Lorraine on your mind and you just took a quick glance, that could look like I, you already eat.
I rev.
Right, I mean, the one on the left is clear, so it's Lorraine, the one on the right to me, if you were not looking for something Lorraine that may, at first glance, oh, we've had something similar, yes.
In the entry level, or excuse me, that you've found, the Lorraine's. Wait, I'm, yeah, when we come into.
The gateways.
Yeah, wait, I think you have the wrong one. Isn't that the same L and line that's on those?
It is sort of like, you know, I don't think it's quite the same.
Yeah, they were, they were the old style that had kind of a multicolored tails to them.
And I think that's, that's like, I really do agree with the point that it should be subject to the process of the eyes going through. But that being said, just like personal on like tweaking things, I think another argument in favor of the one on the right is actually that the similarities to the existing Lorraine that we got on some signs is like a branding consistency thing across time, which I think could be useful because I imagine those things aren't going to come down. And then, I mean, maybe there's a way you get the, a nod to the caverns in this logo on the right. Maybe that would make it too busy, but that would make a lot of sense to me.
Steve, do you have any idea when Jackie's going to have her logos? Is that going to be a mistake?
She just got in the transformation set. Yeah, so I, I don't know where that has been on her priorities. I know that they've been focusing on the strategies, so I can, I can reach out to her and offer her these two and see how they would relate to her, to their branding and see what kind of input they have.
That's it, everybody? Thank you for knowing that, though.
If timeline that is out before, are you all concerned when we learn about this? And then they can help us with our powers, like, you know.
Is there a timeline need?
No, and, and for the most part, the official letterhead that we've, we print has the town seal, not, not these. The logos we simply incorporate into the website, incorporate into our locally printed, in-house printed, you know, we just add it to our, our digital logos for, in Word, and then we, we print those so that the town, if, if council were to, to proceed with either one, we don't really incur significant cost initially. Now, long-term, if we wanted to incorporate it into some of the other signage, we can definitely do that, but initially, there's not too much cost incurred for selection of those, of a logo.
I'm saying while I'm looking at the one on the right, it came out black and white. You can still see it with the line next to the ground and the mountain behind it. So, a lot of the people, they're also print things black and white a lot. The one on the left seems like the caverns already just tacked on to me. I mean, I like the caverns, I like the fact that it's in there, but I don't, the way it's presented.
Well, I will say that the one on the left, we did provide Standout Arts with a copy of the LPD patch, and it's very similar to the LPD patch. That's where this rendition came from. So, there is some consistency on the, with the one on the left with the LPD patch.
Do we know the names of the mountains based behind it that represent, or what's there? Somebody will ask that, I'll bet.
Yeah, that would be a thing for me, which is a little thing, but I just think if they were really, and maybe they are, and I'm just missing it, but if they were reflective of like a real iconic part of the mountains around Lorraine, I think that would, and I am partial to the Newmarket Gap because I, I mean, that's the first one that I think of. That might be too smooth.
It looks like that. Just generic, pal.
Are we going to table this until we talk with Jackie here? All right, Steve, pickleball court discussion.
Yes, sir. Following your regular meeting, staff are hoping that council can talk about where the town should be going as far as consideration of pickleball courts. The previous bid was, received about an $80,000 per pickleball court cost, and then there were some additional bid options. However, that was as part of a bigger bid. We may realize a little bit better costs now than we did then by tightening up the scope, as well as we were still facing some of the higher COVID costs, and we might see a slight reduction in the bids. So, staff's recommendation would be for council to authorize us to put out a new bid based on the original layout of either one, two, three, four pickleball courts, and then if there's any other bid option items that you would want to incorporate around where the pickleball courts would be, either a bench, a table, the water fountain extension from the, the restroom over to, towards closer to where the courts would be, and then the parking lot improvements.
Only thing, the locations, the way it's presented, it'd be an empty spot with a basketball court around this picture of the pickleball court, you can't block it like it shows.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But would give an option both to take or do you want to put in a?
That would be staff's recommendation. The, the layout, Jennifer and her staff worked with Racy to come up with the orientation and placement of those so that long-term, this is something that the town can work towards indeed.
I don't really think they, they can take a side, maybe, but those are things I'd take them and get donations again.
I agree. When I look at these prices, forty-three hundred dollars for the bench and always six thousand for the big exhibit, I think we can come up with other options there to, still provide an inch and a table, but not, not want some pretty good.
I'm sure you might want something, place your stuff on when you're playing, you know, so, a bench makes that, two benches, maybe. So, is your intention, but, uh, would you price for bids for two or four pickleball courts?
Based on what I heard at the, the regular meeting, staff would recommend two. If you wanted us to go for the full four, we can definitely do that. It's just, we're seeking.
Can we ask them to propose that you need to ask them too much?
We could, I just don't know, with the fact that we, we, we put this out to bid originally and had a lot of options, I don't know how the contractors would react to us saying, well, we may, may want two, may want four. So, my recommendation would be to, to bid the two. That way, we can definitely have facilities for folks to use, and then, long-term, if, if there is a need, we can definitely add on or, so, it's however council wants to proceed.
I think we know good you get two, pay for what we have left, and art, I see that an option, should be, but if it is, so, I think we probably should keep it at two, just to show that it's, keep it simpler.
No, I just, I just consensus is all that we're seeking.
Am I good with that?
Well, one question I've got too. I know that when this was originally proposed, which I know was the whole plan, one of the big issues that came up right at the last minute on the funding on that was the maintenance and public works load as far as, I think I was missing about council one, Ritter and council in the lake, that concerns of Parks and Rec having the staff to maintain additional facilities as we add that with the, the central pier and like, with, which is two pickleball courts. If you don't like, we're good with that, and, okay. Because I know maintenance was a concern.
Oh, yeah, but that was a question.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple more, two basketball courts, intensive stadium, too, but just, just bringing that up then.
Any ideas, any concerns? All right, Steve, if you will move forward with that.
Yes, sir. Next item for council's discussion, the council had approved two new positions in the FY 2324 budget for our Parks and Rec Department. Based on some of the, the work effort that Jennifer and, and her department have incurred, she's requesting that the second tradesman position be reclassified as an event and marketing coordinator position that would allow this, the, the park department to have a specific person, point of contact for all events. The person would be responsible to develop the, the marketing, develop the contacts, be the point of contact for, for any of the folks involved with that event, any of the events, and would allow Jennifer and her deputy more time to focus on park department-related issues rather than all of the items associated with the events that the town is now involved with.
I'm just longer than, when I first saw it, I thought, seems like hours and I want to work every week, which is what it is. So, you can actually do stuff that way?
Yes.
I'm going to, don't shoot the messenger when I say this. A citizen brought this up to me about six or eight months ago and haven't shared it with anyone, but the one I thought about it, well, I'm just going to share my information with, local citizen, actually a local business owner in town, and we were discussing about things with the town and events and, and all the amenities that the town is adding and things that we're doing. And that person made a comment that, he said, you know, it's not the town's responsibility to entertain and provide something for everyone to do that comes to town, you know. So, yes, we need parks, all for just like pickleball parks, things like that, but when we get into events, and now even considering a full-time event coordinator, I'm just wanting us to reflect on, I recall when these events started, Mayfest, later became Festival of Spring, these were LDI initiatives when they first started. And I know from my time on LDI, a lot of the events chicken shelled down, which were a lot, were fundraiser events, so we were having big events and we were actually raising money to do town projects and giving money to the town, presenting the town with chefs. And with those, with our history, those events were LDI-driven with some assistance from the town. Of course, you need police for traffic control, you need the, the town, the street department with signs and Parks and Rec with getting everything dressed up and all for it. So, it was a combined effort, but it was not the town's responsibility. We were assisting, and what I've seen over the last several years is this has morphed into the town becoming an event planner and an event marketer somewhere, and LDI, another entity, is basically assisting the town. They're not the driving force anymore. They're, they're just assisting the town, and the town's going to work, and LDI's digging back in where it used to be LDI did the work and the town assisted. So, where I'm going with this is, back to the citizens' comment, and it raises a valid point, the town does not, as the town itself, our town government, we don't make any money with these events. We, we spend money with these events. Yes, there's registration with different vendors and all, but when we look at, and I have never, I haven't seen a breakdown on a individual event on overtime of public works, overtime of police, overtime of Parks and Rec. I know it's got to be huge because lots of times I see, it's an army out here of town employees from daylight, from the sun coming up until dark, on setup, tear down, everything that's involved in between. And the gentleman months ago was speaking of, well, how do town taxpayers have to pay this burden, or, or pay this, have this burden, funding this? And some businesses do benefit from it, of course, retail, things like that. I can tell you personally, as a food business, when we had events in town, we didn't see our, our food sales through the roof. If anything, it dropped. And I'll tell you why it dropped, because typically these events, food trucks, other things coming to town, so people are patronizing them for the main part, and we even had citizens that are regular locals that would come, that did come on those type of events, saying, I didn't want to come down in a mess and bike the traffic and, and everything else. So, we actually see a decline, and there's a lot of businesses in the past, Mr. Spencer with the movie theater, even with Uncle Bucks across the street, they even closed when it was a mess because they, they didn't reap the benefits from it. So, I'm just sharing that. I'm, I'm sharing what I've been seeing through the years, and I think that also that by creating a full-time position, and I know I wanted to take a load off of you, but I think what's going to happen is this is going to snowball, and whoever may be in that position feels like they've got to do more, and I think what we're going to see is more town events, more things going on to justify the position. And I think entertainment and things for people to do, yes, we need to have nice parks, we need to have the, the Greenway, it's also, like, airhead, all this stuff, the routing with these facilities, that gives people something to do. But to entertain them, where people come and sit and be entertained, I mean, I love our fireworks and I love our concerts, I don't want to see that stop. But I know that on our concerts, the whole summer concert series, it used to be Blue Light, it was in Enlong Park, I don't know what type of cost that was back in the day when the Blue Light Concert Series came through town. That was the start of it, and now it's to where we're booking and seeking things, and we're becoming, a portion of the town becoming an entertainment industry, and I think it's going to snowball on us, and it also, you know, what I was about to say is, I tend to these concerts, too, you don't make all of them, it's long here and there, but all of us sitting here know our true town employees and those that are in the county and those that are tourists that you've never seen before, and sitting at any one of those events, even the ones that are big and packed, we don't have 20% of our, we don't have 10% of our town's population there as far as actual taxpayers that are at those events, but they're paying for it. But I'll be quiet, I said, I'm just sharing that I think we need to have that discussion as we look at this, and, and usual, I've even thought about, you know, we have nonprofits come and, you know, look for town assistance and things like that. I'm worried about what would be wrong if some of the nonprofits doing like what LDI is. I mean, LDI still does good work, I'm not being down on LDI, I'm just saying, I know roles have changed, and I was on that board for many years, and there was a lot of work and a lot of fundraisers and ticket sales and planning that went on for months and months for one event. And I know you have to do the same as the town, months and months of work goes into that one day. But with nonprofits, what would be wrong if some nonprofits came up with an idea of a particular event, and they used it as their fundraiser, and the town, we assisted them so that an event still happens, it still draws people into town, the fundraiser has, I mean, the nonprofit has the opportunity to make some money on it. When you have registered vendors, or there's, there's tables that are sold or whatever, spaces, whatever, if a nonprofit can see some profit from that because they've got volunteer labor, but with us, when there's registration piece of different things, we're paying so much in overtime, it's not even scratching the surface on what little bit of revenues coming in from it, and it's, it's a cost to what's going on.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you said, Councilman, and all valid and good points. I do want to back up and say, the reason why I said that it's a long time, because I have had many conversations with Jim and his staff, Ron, and I do wish Jackie is a version of, she is my person, because I've asked a number of times, I'm not sure if I have a dozen times over the last couple of years, even with our previous executive director of LDI, for trying to understand exactly when that shifted. When did the, the events go from an LDI-driven fundraising event to be a town event? And I've never really gotten good clarity or understanding on that. Many years ago, when I was running, some of those opportunities were, some of those events were by fundraising opportunities for other nonprofit organizations like Choices or Page One, et cetera. But what I do know from our conversations with Jim and his staff is, and we use the concert series as an example, but, and, and Jim can speak herself, that it is a year-round, the communication, the outreach and communications logistics portion of it is very common, mainly with Jim and his staff, which prevents them then from doing the other things that really directs the park and rec and protects everything. And so, I think it, it begs the question then, is, you know, this, our count of events have been growing since I've been on council. So, are we going to maintain those events, or are we going to cut those back? Just to maintain, there, there needs to be some, you know, somewhere. I don't think it's, we can't keep asking Jim and his staff to continue to maintain the level of events the way that they have been because it's taken away, and, and, frankly, I think it happened some side of our conversation with a few, burnout is very real, and, and we have to take care of our employees and the capacity issues. So, that's where that's been from when I made the comment, that, you know, because it's been a couple of years that I've been there, she and the department staff, and I'm going to be there, it's wonderful, and once we have one, it's kind of hard to take away, right? And, and so.
Maybe some of them might be easier to take away than others, right? Some of them, if they're not that well-intended.
Right.
Jen, since.
Obviously, appropriate to have a conversation with LDI to see if they're untied or, or capacity would be right to entertain, maybe to bring some of these back under their umbrella. But again, I think, we, we have our personal director here, so maybe it'd be appropriate to also allow work to.
Yes, since, Jen, since we've got you here, and you've got to, you know, I mean, do you think that this is more of a moment of just reassessment of our relationship with events?
Sure, absolutely. Would you like me to come up to?
Please, yes.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
It's all right. I'm, I'm here just for this, so I, I do appreciate the time, I appreciate the opportunity to just kind of present this, and I, I definitely respect what, what you're saying as far as this potentially snowballing into a situation in which we would take on additional events. But I think Stephanie hit the nail on the head, this is, this is about just maintaining the, what we have so far. And I, like you, you know, I've been here over three years, I am, I am not sure when the shift occurred. You know, I hear lots of very things about Festival of Spring and Mayfest and, and how even the downtown concert series at one point maybe functioned more on the back of LDI and their volunteers. So, I don't have.
uh maybe functioned more on the back of LDI and their volunteers. So I don't have the background on history. Uh, I, I can't, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't here for how they functioned, you know, in the past, so. Um, but, but Alex, it was a, it was a complete, just kind of reevaluation this year with where we are. I think we could not probably have hired a better assistant than Ryan. Uh, anyone who had the, the, you know, fortunate, was fortunate to work with him, saw that. His work ethic was unparalleled to, to just about anybody else. And so I think that even with him taking that role, knowing that we hired him uh kind of specifically with his event background to carry the burden of events. What we found out was that with the current workload, like Stephanie mentioned, we plan year-round for our events. In fact, we're, we're now getting into booking bands uh just so that we uh, so that we have the opportunity of, of getting some good entertainment. They're booking now. I haven't had the time to put together our 2024 event lineup. It's just been so busy. We have Halloween coming up. Uh, working on finalizing the flyers and the banners for all of our holiday stuff. And so uh it's this uh, it always feels like you're in panic mode just trying to keep up with, with the timeline. And so it's, it's highly demanding. Uh, and, and back to the subject of, you know, is, is, as much as Ryan did for this and he did, he did carry a good burden, it did not take, you know, the significant portion off of my desk, is because it takes so, so much to just do that, the coordination, the correspondence. It's just a lot. And so, and so, you know, when, when Ryan left, I had a conversation with Steve and I said, I, I need help. It's just not even with that position. I need help. I need an assistant uh to manage the parks and to be um to be there as we do when we look at staff assignments and projects and budgets and grants and events and uh ball tournaments and athletic things. And uh, and then I need someone else to handle the, the routine event planning portion of that. And it is year-round correspondence. It's the marketing, it's the flyers and the media. And it's uh, and so I don't see this as a, it's coming off of my plate and we're creating something new, an entirety. I see this as an, an, an event assistant, um as well as freeing up a lot of that for an assistant for, for myself as well, for monitoring more crews. So my goal in this um is not to request any additional funding. I think we're gonna see in the next year with, with my department, we have some, you know, impending changes probably with that, with some potential upcoming retirements and um just a shifting and, and that. So it is, it is my goal to um, to still work within constraints of, of my budget for this year. And for this position to not be um an event planner, but a manager and a coordinator to work and under my direction to send the emails and the letters and to seek the sponsorships for the trout derby. We have trout derby coming up. It's our twentieth anniversary. This should be a really big year for us. The um, the coordination of the sponsorships for that event is astronomical. It really is. And it's something that uh I don't want to give up because we have such good support, good community support for that event. My goal is not to add anything, obviously. It's just to maintain. And it's to give the events what it deserves. We saw a fifty percent increase in attendance in Sunflower Festival this year, fifty percent. So um, you know, and I also don't, I don't wanna, I want, don't want to leave you with the, the impression that we do not get support from LDI or from PACA. We get tremendous support from them. And, and also the Page About Arts Council, they are with us through these events. But you also have to imagine that they're volunteer-based, their boards are volunteer-based and, and so they're also struggling to get the people with the hands on the ground too. So we could not do our events if it were not for our community partners. But yes, we do carry the burden for our events. And it's just uh the, the time demands for that. It's uh, it's just, it's just too much for myself and to also have an assistant. It, it, we didn't realize uh what we had hoped. Having, you know, the Ryan take on the, the bigger bor- burden of events, it did not, it just didn't hap- happen like that. I need just additional administrative assistance with that.
So I've been on council for a while. Um, and I know over the past several years, we've added several positions in Parks and Rec, okay? There's been several positions. There used to not be an assistant, the director. And the town ran, the parks ran well. They were being well maintained, everything was going fine. So I, I guess the main difference really is just all these events. Unless maybe we do need to take a very hard look at these events, because are we paying, how many hundreds of thousands are we paying cumulatively? If you add it all up and take it all the moving pieces, is it worth that? You know? Is this the right way to be doing this? We have a beer garden that has live music every night of the week, it seems, you know? So do we need live music for the town? It's paid for by us town citizens. I'd like to do, but at some point, we're adding more positions. Uh, I know you're saying it's not, but then if you need that extra raising later on, then we will be. And it's just, it keeps growing and growing and growing, so.
And I, I think too, and I, and I agree, we are, but the Parks Department, I think, has changed a lot in the last ten or fifteen years. Uh, we've expanded the Greenway landscaping that, you know, we have a dedicated crew that, that comes in and focuses on that. Um, there's facility maintenance with the aging infrastructure that we have. Um, we added the additional new ball field complex probably ten to fifteen years ago.
No, I think the scope of this is so, but I'm not talking about right before you, I'm talking about a couple of iterations prior to you. It was well maintained.
Yeah, no, I think it's fair that, I mean, respectfully, it's changed a lot, right? Again, I think that just the amount of maintenance and upkeep, look at the Greenway expansion and the facilities. Look at those conversations we were having last year with the airhead and the management property up there.
Well, it has changed in the time I'm talking about.
And what it was, I would say, six years ago.
What, how so?
Sheer volume of people in use in our areas.
Sure.
That demands, right, more frequent and intense maintenance by way of increased usership in this, in this areas. And also we've expanded the footprint of the bar, of, of the parks, you know?
I think, I think one of the things that, that you do need to take into account. Um, and, and Jennifer has put together a, a capital plan of what we need to do. Um, a lot of this, the uh facilities that we have, both at Dean and at Lake Arrowhead, her crews have already started to do re-roofing, to do replacing of some of the timbers that have rotted. So I think what we're, we're challenged with is yes, we have added additional staff, but what you're seeing is the maintenance efforts have actually dramatically increased, because ten, fifteen years ago, uh they didn't have to deal with a roof that is now thirty or forty or fifty years old. So that's, that's where the staffing, uh, I, from my perspective, we are seeing that um the, the, the increased staffing is just due to the aging infrastructure within our parks.
And, and I've got to say that, that, in my opinion, that's exactly what Parks and Rec is responsible for, you know, and doing. My, and by the way, I want to say that I don't know how you get done all you get done. And you and Ryan both, even when you had him, you know, on your team, it's just, it's amazing what, what you have accomplished. And the events have all been fantastic events. And uh, Fourth of July, and you know, I come to those things as well. I'm just bringing up that when we look at the, the true focus of Parks and Rec, and I realize you need help, I'm not arguing that. I'm wondering, just as we said, do we need to maybe trim off or shave some of these events where we don't have all that load to carry? And we can see how some things going on. And really, to, right, I, in my opinion, someone correct me if you think I'm wrong, um, I know from looking at this through the years, I remember when downtown was dead and nothing was happening downtown. And, and you could hardly get businesses downtown. And a lot of the, the work that started with the, the initial part of LDI and, and the flower baskets and the events and getting people to come downtown, and that has worked. It, it truly has worked. But the thing that's happening now, I think too, is that town, downtown now is thriving. And it's self-sufficient in a way. I'm not saying we need to neglect it, neglect it. I'm not saying we stopped doing anything. That's not what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is that this past weekend, for example, I came through town this past weekend and it was the busiest I've ever seen it in quite some time. There wasn't an event going on, but there was nowhere to park. The streets were filled. It was that way at seven o'clock in the morning when I came through. People on the street and everything else. So we're starting to get the, and, and we didn't have the social media, we didn't have things like that, you know, years ago when we were trying to get this going. But it's feeding itself now to a degree that it's really sometimes like, how are we gonna deal with this? Or how are we gonna park? Where are you gonna, you know? So I think we're at a point to maybe trim back and just, I'm not saying you don't need the help. I know you, you do need the help, but I, I don't want to see a position cause this to grow. And just as the citizen mentioned, you know, it's a town's priority should be streets, water, sewer, public safety, you know, maintaining our parks. That's the true mission of what we need to do with tax dollars is maintain this town and provide the services we're responsible for. And we're in sewer being the top. And uh, and we've got failing issues there that we're, that we still need to address. It's gonna be big money. But when it comes to events, I, I just think we need to trim a little more.
Do you have assistants who are participating for that now?
We will be scheduling those.
Okay. And like this says, this event marketing coordinator would be a reclassification of a position you already had funding for?
Yes, we had funding for an additional full-time maintenance position.
Okay, so in just, in your assessment, this would be more useful?
Yes, sir.
Just for your time, okay.
Yes, sir.
And that person could do other things too.
And we, we have been absolutely.
It would just be you have to do event marketing, you could go out and do other things. So as you see, okay.
Yes, sir.
And what, what's your total staff right now, including yourself?
Total, including myself, uh, is eight.
Seems pretty reasonable.
I'm gonna go back to when Pat O'Brien was up. He was telling me as I got to know what to do on the council day. I'm an event coordinator. So this is not a new problem. This is something they've been dealing with for a long time. I, the town is gonna always partner with people. And when you say we shouldn't have events in town, it should be volunteers setting it up or other businesses. They're gonna still use our land. They're gonna still use our spaces. So we're gonna still have our people there picking up the trash and making sure the grass is mowed. So we're not getting out of that. I think the, the things have been, PACA has been doing things, Sunflower Festival, uh, the Cardboard Regatta. Man, that's not town events. Those are packet events. The trick or treat used to be a huge thing at Ruff Dean. Pat would spend weeks filling up those bins. He'd come to the high school and recruit bunches of kids. And now it's pretty much a business is giving that candy and it's a whole lot less burden, I think. And that's very positive, because they're the ones buying the candy and giving away.
And LDI is coordinating the, the vendors.
There's a turkey trot, there's a, the mud run used to be the chamber. And was that changing? That's when that stopped. So, you know, maybe we want to do something like that to pick up what the chamber did. That may not be wise. But the fishing tournament from Stanley Police Department and other things like that, I, I think we're missing out on thinking that the town's doing everything. It's not. It's, it's participating in everything. I'm, I agree. You can reclassify a worker for another title if you want. You don't have to give a crap about that.
I didn't.
There's no good change there. It just, I'm, I don't want to run your department like what I think is your right. I want you to do it because you have the training for it.
I think the path forward between what I'm hearing is really clear, which is we can let you have this kind of thing that you already have funding for, you just reclassify it. This will give you a lot of relief in the short term. And then we can, at the same time, say we're gonna have a serious, strong conversation about our relationship with events. And I think we can do both. And I think we should do both, because I know you need this help tomorrow, but that conversation is gonna take longer than tomorrow. And that's my, that's my position. But we should be serious about that conversation, absolutely.
And let me clarify, my comments aren't meant to be disparaging.
Oh.
It's a matter of, it's getting, it's getting bigger, so something is, you're feeding a beast somewhere, right?
I agree. I, I agree. And I, and I agree with Alex. I think it is a compromise on both things. I think the thing with event planning that makes it so difficult is that um if you, if you take a project or you take an assignment and, and you really need to go and it's uh in, in order, it's tedious, it's monotonous, and you're being interrupted forty times a day, you are ineffective. Um, and you're not giving the events that we've already committed to due diligence. Um, I, I've tried pretty hard over the past three years to just, to step into this role and say, okay, where are we? Where do we need to be? Where have we come from? Who do we have to work with? Where are we overextending ourselves? I've tried to push back and say no delicately uh on some of the roles that I think we took on somehow inherently. As other people stepped out of their current positions, we picked it up so they wouldn't drop the ball. And, and I have tried to get us out of some of those things. This year, we cut back on the outdoor adventure programs, because we just did not have the time to do that. We ended up doing one this fall. Um, it was remotely successful. But we did pull back on some of those. So, so I, I have made an effort to try to get us back on track. We do have an aging infrastructure. Uh, at best, our Ruff Dean Park has facilities that's fifteen years old. We still have, uh, from the comments that I am getting from recent tournament participants, some of the best fields in the facilities around. My staff is amazing. There's, there's not one of them on my staff that wouldn't probably come pick me up on the side of the road if I had a flat tire in the middle of the night on Christmas Eve. Uh, we're dedicated to each other and we're dedicated to the town and to our jobs. Um, and it's my goal to try to, to support them and to support our community. And, and, and try to train in the beast, so to speak, but it is already a beast. And so uh, you know, this position, it is really someone that can sit and focus and allow me to focus on, on the things that will help us get back on track with the facilities maintenance and repairs and grants. I don't know if you've been out to the Red Park, but we are, we've made tremendous progress on our fit trail repairs. It looks amazing. And that's the sort of thing that I should be focused on. I should be able to head out there once or twice a day, meet with the crews, see what's going on, see what they need. It's a struggle when, when I'm, when you're dealing with so many other things that, that we could put someone in, in charge of. Just the sheer communication and development for some of the marketing for these. So it is not my goal, it is not, it is definitely not my goal to take this and expand what we have. It's to, to help us be more efficient. The, the position is also written to include maintenance. So this person would be, need to be able to come in even on emergency situations uh to be able to provide maintenance if they're responsible for mowing Roughwater Plaza or pulling weeds in the flower bed or you know, whatever, you know, event supply organization and packing and loading. And so but I, but I really think in order for us to, to tame this craziness with events, we need to have someone mostly primarily dedicated to that.
And Jen, I want to say too that who wouldn't love all of this that's been on, any events, and all of it? It comes down to what can the town afford? I'm always the guy looking at the money side of it. And you know, I look at Parks and Rec and our long portion, those two budgets have grown, if you look at the last five years, they have just exploded in as far as operating costs in those two departments. And I look at, you know, our our current town's tax rate, which is very high compared to neighbors in the valley of other towns. And I just feel like if we stay on the path that we've been on for the last five years, we're gonna have even higher tax rates and all that's gonna happen because, you know, our shit. So, you know, I bring this up, who wouldn't want to have all of this? Who wouldn't want to have even more? But at the end of the day, all the costs and what can our people who live in this town, they work at, what can they afford? You know, and just trying to keep, but thanks for all that you do. And, and I agree with Alex. It's, I think somewhere in here, we find a happy medium. I just, when I saw this, maybe thinking about what the gentleman said, and I can see this getting even larger. Yeah, I think we've really got to, have to control that.
I mean, how much is allocated already in the budget for this position?
With benefits, I think it's in the forty, high forties.
The base salary is only allocated at twenty-eight thousand, and that's only for half the year, starting in January. So we're talking, you know, less than less than probably twenty-two with benefits for this, this fiscal year.
Or could it be a part-time position too, if it needs to be? And could it be a part-time position too, if it needs to be?
If it had to be, I would take it.
So it was 30 hours, even if that was an ideal candidate?
Absolutely. I, this is right now where I need help the most. Yeah, so I would take 30-hour position if that's what it.
What do you think it would work in the budget for?
It's, it's working within the budget, right?
It is.
Yeah, I'm not asking for an additional, I'm not asking.
That's what I'm getting at, it's already there.
Yeah, it's already there.
Yeah, okay.
We had budgeted for two positions, we budgeted one in July and wanted to do more.
And thanks for clarifying, there's some collateral duties, maintenance, you're late and everything else with this position.
Oh, absolutely.
Not just a full-time.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
And you all wrote the, wrote it really well to account for all the things. And even the working conditions section is actually kind of funny, once you have that group slash irate citizen, so enjoy that.
Now, we will be bringing this back to you at your November meeting for council approval.
I'll approve it.
Yes.
All right, Jen, thank you for being here, everybody.
Thank you.
Anybody else, anything else for Jen? Thank you, Jen, we all thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
It's, it's frustrating and difficult to handle, we thank you. All right, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir, council's requested to discuss a proposed code amendment to Section 74-9, clearance for a bunch of stuff in the right of way. The town attorney was reviewing this section specifically because it states, it includes, currently includes signs, which are regulated in our zoning ordinance. So he developed some proposed amendments to that, which basically cites the zoning amendment for signs, as well as establishes a section that any object that violates this section would have to be removed, given a five-day notice by the town. So it's basically just cleaning up of, of the ordinance and making it in, conform better with the zoning code. Does not require a public hearing, and we would include it on your agenda for November if council desires.
Any questions, Mr. Burke, at that end? Do we schedule a public hearing in November?
No public hearings necessary, it'd just be consideration, yes, sir.
All right, anybody else on that? All right, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir, last item for council's consideration tonight is a master land use plan amendment submitted by Baker Development. What they're proposing for Laray Landing is to go back to the duplexes, villas that were originally proposed for part of this development. And as, as the amendment would allow for, 42 of these villas, two of which are, 44 total, two of which are already constructed within the site. And it would allow, this is a developer different than D.R. Horton, it is, give me one second to find their correct name. Landmark Atlantic Holdings LLC is, is pursuing construction of both the single-family and these villas as part of the Laray Landing development. It doesn't increase the, the number of units or the number of units per acre, and it's simply an amendment, I think, that is a betterment for the town. And we would take this to our planning commission in November and then it would come back to you all in December.
I think these are a, a real improvement because you have a chance of local people having interest in these, this single floor, being good for seniors. I mean, I think thus far, we haven't seen as many local people benefit and have interest out there, and this would really change that conversation. I'd even love to see that the villas be a higher share if they were open to that, but I think this alone is progress. Another thing I'd like to add to the conversation is maybe seeing if they'd be interested in, you know, voluntary deed restrictions on the short-term rental issue, because Steve Wood said that they actually are not interested in having the single-family homes or the villas be short-term rentals. And I think if they're serious on that, I, I am too, and I'd love to see deed restrictions into the conversation. I think that's appropriate.
I know that they have committed towards the single-family, not having, being restricted towards short-term, but we can definitely ask them about the villas as well.
That would be great, thank you.
And the villas is just a green section right here?
Yes, sir, well, it's this section right in here. These are all the, the construction of, of townhomes that D.R. Horton has pursued. The single families are over on the, the west side of the lot, and then the, the villas would be this area right in here.
And that road, I was talking to Brian before the meeting, would that road connect all the way through to the single-family homes?
Caterpillar would eventually connect, yes, sir.
Do you know what that would be, or I guess?
I, it, it would happen, I don't know timing. And, and I don't know, they've not submitted a priority of the villas or the single family, they're, they're simply looking to amend the, the master plan to allow for that. But we can definitely ask them scheduling of when, my understanding is that they are looking to do the single families shortly, but I don't have a timeframe for shortly.
Day one, three, four, five, that. Yeah, the crazy damn, go last night.
Do you know the total number of housing units that have increased since?
It hasn't increased. You totaling the sale?
How, the units, total units of, total units in the town, right? I'm curious, know that.
That I don't off the top of my head. It's been significant, though.
I'm just a little, somehow we're in this, we lost, this was approved on March 15, 2006, it was my first day working here, and somehow we lost that community green that shone on previous, of that, unfortunately, it's kind of, now it's kind of, the open space is kind of cast to the slides. And it's been changed so many times, and of course, I wasn't here for a little while, but I look at the original master plan, I'm a little disappointed in that, but I just hope that, and going back to this sounds good to me, I mean, I think it makes sense, like Alex said, but I, I do hope that this is connected through to the single-family homes and that's just something that, you know, is, is clear in this, that this will be connected and what, how, but this is moving along out there. I mean, it's been 17 years since it was originally approved and it's up here quite a while, so it's good to see it finally moving. I'm just a little disappointed in, and also, also brought up that I wish someone on the line and the buffer between Walmart, there was a planned tree buffer that had been done years ago, it could have been growing for years, but I don't know why in the world you would not want a buffer between Walmart and the back of the community college. That's something we could talk to them about, maybe try to plant something there and get something going. But, and it really is going to benefit them more than anything just to have a little more separation, so, usually.
I do know that they have indicated the, the reduction in the green area is associated with the dedication of property to the, the community college, just the, the area that they have to offer for the green area has, has been reduced since.
And that's fine, again, you know, I never really totally understood why the pond in a way. I thought when you guys talked about it, I know it really wasn't our decision, but it seemed like we left, like it would be okay, worth to save.
And both, both the county and the town recommended to DEQ to allow the pond to be converted to a wet pond. However, the state determined that it had to be, because the permit was issued with it being a dry pond, the developer, they, they weren't willing to reconsider a wet pond at that location. Yes, sir.
Anybody else on that end? You have a good planning position, is that correct?
Yes, sir, they'll be considering it in, in November and then it'll come back to you all in December.
If that's all we have tonight, anybody else have anything? I do have to thank you, you're a talented staff, a huge, beautiful flowers in memory of our mom, and of course, you, you know, it's hard. How thoughtful of you all to do that. We miss our mom, she was one of the kind, funny and full of wit. And regards to Alice, I have my sister's sentiments, thanks so much for the lovely flowers, they brighten up the whole of our hearts, we appreciate you taking to us. And this is from Bill Murphy's daughter, or excuse me, not, not Fanny, Murphy's daughters, Mary and Alice. That's all I have, ladies and gentlemen. You do have your invitation to the Christmas party? And I'm going to get my mind back to Danielle right now, before I'm here, and you heard you do the same. This is all, thank you. Yes, sir.